And at the conclusion of the question and answer session, we'll take a short break. And the commissioners will join us to hear your comments in the second part of our evening. If you plan to address the commission with comments in part two of the evening, please complete the sign in sheets located just outside the door with our public affairs staff if you have not done so already. For those of you participating by Zoom, you will be provided with instructions at the start of the comment session. So now we're ready for the informational session and our presentations. Our first presenter is Robert Vincent of Kansas Gas Service. Mr. Vincent?
Thank you, Brian, and good evening, everyone. I'll give it just a second for my presentation to come up for you all. I think this might be Commission Staff's presentation. That would not go well for me. I'm not rehearsed on that at all. Thank you. Well, good evening, everybody. As Brian said, my name is Robert Vincent. I'm an attorney with Kansas Gas Service, and it is my pleasure to be here with you tonight in Topeka to talk a little bit about the case that we have pending before the commission. I'll start with a brief message on customer service and tell you just a little bit about our company. But we will spend the bulk of the majority tonight discussing our case, some key aspects in it, particularly how they impact residential customers and how you can stay engaged. As we get further into the summer months, we know schedules start to fill up, so we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and we're glad that you're here. So as your natural gas utility, we want to provide exceptional customer service to you each and every day. And while the focus of tonight is our rate case, we know you may have questions about your account or about your bill, and we want to answer those questions. We have folks from our customer service team here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. Of course, you can always access your account online 24 hours a day at kansasgasservice.com, and you can call our customer service line at 800-794-4780. We're open Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I'll put this information up again at the very end of my presentation, so don't feel like you have to rush to jot this information down. So let me tell you a little bit about One Gas. One Gas is one of the largest natural gas public utilities in the country. Through Kansas, Oklahoma, and Texas, we serve just over 2.3 million customers. By market share, we're the largest natural gas public utility in Kansas, we're the largest natural gas public utility in Oklahoma, and we're the third largest natural gas public utility in Texas. In Kansas, we serve about 650,000 customers in over 360 communities. Spread all throughout the state, our workforce of about 1,000 employees serves towns of 100,000 to 100,000. We have a centuries-long history of service in the state that we're incredibly proud of, and we are focused on the years to come. In that, we know what our mission is. We deliver natural gas for a better tomorrow, and we've taped out a strategy to accomplish that mission. But guiding us on that path are our core values, what's on the left side of the screen or the right side of the screen right now. Those serve as our compass, and they're foundational to the decisions that we make. From the safe and ethical operation of our business, to the inclusive atmosphere that we cultivate, to the service and value that we provide to our customers, this undergirds or buttresses every decision we make. We're constantly reflecting back on these values and making sure that they're integrated into how we serve you. So now that we've talked a little bit about our customer service focus, how we're available tonight if you have any questions, and us as a company, I'd like to turn to our rate case. And before I dive into the specifics of it, I thought it might make a little bit of sense to talk through the rate case process itself. There is a significant amount of work that goes into putting together a case like this, not just from us, but from everyone involved. To set rates going forward, we have to benchmark our past, and that starts with a test year. A test year is a 12-month period we use to determine what our cost of service is. Our rates are designed so that, over the course of a year, the rates customers pay covers the cost to serve them. And that test year is a window that we use to look through that and check to see what those expenses and revenues should be that go into our cost of service. So that's the next step we take in our case. Our team outlines all of the costs we incur, the revenues we receive, making sure that they fairly represent what it takes to run a natural gas utility. And once we've determined what our overall cost of service is, we need to work out how each of our customers contribute to those costs. Different types of customers use the system differently. A home uses natural gas, then a bakery, which uses natural gas different than a warehouse or an irrigation pivot. All of those different customer types place different demands on the system at different times. So we study that to see how those costs contribute. After that, after we've performed that study, we then need to work out what our rate design should be. We take all those costs and work to find what is the right mix of fixed service charges. Those are those charges on your bill that don't fluctuate month to month, and variable charges, like our delivery charge that vary based on how much natural gas customers consume. A tremendous amount of work goes into preparing a case. Over a dozen witnesses in our case with hundreds of pages of testimony and exhibits. And a tremendous amount of work goes into reviewing a case. The commission's staff and Curb, other intervenors pore over our filing, checking our work, testing our arguments, all in an effort to validate what we've proposed is in the public interest. I should mention, our entire case is online and available for you to read at the commission's website, and we'd encourage you to do so. Ultimately, all of us develop our own independent positions on the case, and we present those to the commission for its regulatory review and approval. So with that taped out and what the rate case process is, I wanted to speak to how this might impact a customer. So a typical residential customer, on average, pays just under $1,200 for our natural gas service. And the costs that make up that service can be broken down into a number of categories. By and large, the greatest expense on a customer's bill is the cost of natural gas. And I want to make clear, we don't mark that cost up at all, not a penny. The price we pay to purchase and transport and store natural gas is the price that you pay. Integrated into this cost on this slide are the costs that are related to Winter Storm Uri, that week-long stretch of cold weather back in February 2021. Next couple of items and components that go into a customer bill are taxes and fees, like franchise fees that we pay to municipalities for the privilege to place our system in their right of way. The next chunk, though, are Kansas Gas Service's direct costs. And during a rate case, that's what we're largely focused on. So what's driving our case? Since our last rate case ended in 2019, we've invested more than $600 million in Kansas to strengthen our system and provide you that reliable service that we're known for. Only about half of those investments are currently in our rates. The Kansas Legislature has given us tools like the Gas System Reliability Surcharge, which we use to fund projects that modernize our system. It's time for all of these investments, though, that we've been making, to get integrated into our base rates. At the same time, our expenses have grown. Unfortunately, we've experienced the same cost pressures that you have. And while we've been able to mitigate some of those increased costs with being more efficient or growing the number of customers that we serve, it hasn't been enough. That's what's driving our case. What's unique about public utilities and the cases that come before the commission are the number of interests that we're trying to balance. With every issue, big and small, we're working to balance a number of competing thoughts. Imagine a scale where you're trying to balance what's right for the customer, what's right for the company, what's right for those who have invested in us, what is right as a policy matter for the state of Kansas. It's not an easy task. Every stakeholder in this process has a compelling argument for every position they take. That's why nights like tonight are so important. Your voice is critical in this process, and we're here to have an honest conversation with you about what's in our case. So here's what it is. When we look at all of the expenses that we incur and the revenues that we receive, we're able to calculate our rate of return. And what that is right now is it's 2.61%. Our argument is straightforward. We think those scales that we're trying to balance have come out of balance, and we need to adjust our rates to provide a fair return and also maintain affordable service to our customers. In this case, we're asking for an overall rate of return of 7.88%. We think this rate strikes that right balance of reasonableness. To fill the gap between what we're currently earning and what our request is, we've asked the commission to raise our base rates $58.1 million. For the average residential customer, that's about $8 a month. It's not lost on us how that rate increase can impact you. We're sensitive to how any change in our rates can impact any customer. That's why we think now is the right time to introduce options and choices for our residential customers in Kansas. And that is my next slide here, A/B rates. During the commission's look into Winter Storm Uri and how it impacted us as utility, we agreed to study whether residential customers would benefit by being broken down into multiple subclasses. In Kansas, we serve over half a million residential customers. And as you can imagine, there's different amounts of usage across that entire customer base. Right now, our residential customers pay the same rates. We have one-size-fits-all rates. Every residential customer pays the same customer charge and the same delivery charge. But as you can imagine, with so many customers, maybe there's a better way to design rates. That's our proposal here in this case. The results of that effort are presented in our witnesses, and we've got these rates designed to... Hang on, Michelle, I don't... There we go. We've designed our A rates to help customers who use less natural gas than the average, and our B rates for customers who use more. Let me tell you about how we went about designing that. We assumed there'd be normal weather, and then we looked at how much natural gas the average residential customer uses. It's about 73 MCF a year, and MCF is 1,000 cubic feet, and it's the standard we use in our bills. So we divided those customer groups into two folks, or two classes, those who use less and those who use more. With this data, we developed new rates that can help mitigate the high bills associated with high natural gas usage and also reflect our cost structure. With A/B rates, you get to choose what's best for you. If you use less than the average, then the A plan makes more sense, and you're able to take advantage of a lower fixed customer charge. If you use more natural gas than the average, the B plan makes more sense and allows you to take advantage of a lower delivery charge. To initially set customers up on this rates, what we'll do is we'll take a look at their historical usage and place them on the rate that makes the most economic sense to them. For new or existing customers that don't have a full year's worth of usage to compare to, we'll estimate it based on their consumption patterns to put them on the most economic rate. And if you're a brand-new customer to the system or a new property with no usage history whatsoever, we'll place you on our A rate so you can take advantage of that lower service charge. I should mention, though, that the customer is the one who has the power to choose. I'm sorry, Michelle, I'm not clicking again.
There will be a question period after the three presentations, and then comments once the commissioners join us. But thank you, though.
So like I mentioned, customers have the power to choose. If your situation changes and it makes sense to switch to a different rate, you have the power to do that. Residential customers can switch rates once a year. Our customers within our Oklahoma sister utility, Oklahoma Natural Gas, have had A/B rates for nearly 20 years, and some of our Texas customers have this rate structure as well. We're excited to bring it to Kansas, but this isn't the only new proposal we've brought to the table. We're proposing to implement a new way of adjusting our rates, and that's the annual performance rate adjustment. A few years ago, the Kansas Legislature studied different approaches to setting utility rates, and one of those items was performance-based ratemaking. Performance-based rates generally allow for smaller annual rate adjustments to reflect changes in investments and expenses as opposed to larger but less frequent rate cases. That's what we're proposing here. We'll use this proceeding to set a baseline and a range, and then use that annually to review our rates, our investments, our expenses, and our earned return. And right out of the gate, we have built customer-focused benefits into this proposal. If our earned return falls within this band that we're proposing, there'd be no change in our rates. If we earn above that band, then we would flow 75% of that excess back to customers. Through a form, we'd use a bill credit to flow that back to you. This keeps an incentive for us to run our business efficiently, but also make sure that you share in the lion's portion of any excess earnings. If we don't hit those performance... I should mention that this 75%, 25% split that we've come up with, we only get our 25% portion if we hit certain customer-focused performance metrics. If we don't hit those, then customers get more. The same's true on the other end. If our earned return falls less than this band, then we would make an adjustment to our rates to make up for that shortfall. But the main takeaway that we've presented in this case is that we think a proposal like this aligns the interests of all our stakeholders. It allows us to annually have our expenses and our investments reviewed. It allows customers to share in any excess earnings that we have, and it gives continued frequent look at our operations to our regulators. So we're excited about our performance-based rate plan and the commission's review of it. We've covered quite a few items tonight, from what goes into a rate case to our overall request, to two new exciting rate choices for our residential customers and an innovative new way of looking at our rates. There simply isn't enough time to cover everything that's in our case. But I did want to mention that we've got other elements of this, all with testimony included and schedules and exhibits that you can review on the commission's website, and we'd encourage you to do it. Our entire case is online, ready for you to look over. So now that I've covered some of the highlights of our case, here's what's next. On July 1st, the commission's staff and Curb and other interveners to the case are going to file testimony on our request and state their independent conclusions on it. A little bit later in August, the commission's going to conduct an evidentiary hearing on our case. And as Brian mentioned, between now and early August, you have the option to comment on our case, and we want to hear those comments. Of course, you can submit one tonight, but if you'd like to make a comment later, you can make one electronically on the commission's website. You can write them directly at their Topeka headquarters, and you can call their public affairs phone number. We've covered quite a bit of ground tonight, and I appreciate your patience as I walked through all of this. If you're needing assistance with your account, we're here tonight to help. Of course, you can always visit our website, and you can always call. If you'd like to know more about us as a company, we'd love to visit. And if you have questions about our case, we want to answer them. Whether it's the drivers behind it, the new rate options that we're proposing for residential customers, the innovative way we're thinking about looking at our rates annually, any other aspect of the case, we're here to answer your questions. Earlier, I mentioned that this is an opportunity for us to have an honest conversation with you, and I meant that. We think that the rate case process is an important public proceeding, and we think public comments are critical to it. So tonight, if you have any questions for us, we want to answer them. And if you have comments for the commission, we want to hear those, too. So we're grateful for the chance to be with you tonight. And on behalf of the entire team who's here tonight from us and the entire team that's put this case together, we're looking forward to answering your questions and taking your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Our next presenter is David Nichol, Consumer Counsel for Curb. And just as a reminder, we have three presentations, and then we will take questions. Thank you.
I don't think this is the right slide deck yet. There we go. That is correct. Thank you. Good evening. My name is David Nichol. I'm Consumer Counsel for the Citizens Utility Ratepayer Board, known by its acronym, Curb. This evening, I'd like to talk to you about Curb's role in this rate case and what are our concerns with regard to the application and the increase of Kansas Gas Service request that the commission grant them. Curb is involved in this case as an advocate for residential and small commercial ratepayers. What that means is a practical matter is that we're going to come in as an advocate for residential and small commercial ratepayers to ask the commission to grant the lowest possible rates that are legally reasonable. Since 1989, Curb has acted as such an advocate. Curb staff consist of eight different employees. We're very small. We're a governmental agency consisting of three attorneys, three technical staff, and two administrative staff. But over the years, the Curb has been functioning as an advocate for residential customers. We have sought low rates for our constituency in each and every rate case. And in some rate cases, we've actually called for a revenue decrease or a lower rate than what's asked for as an increase. So we've asked for those rates to be lowered. We're looking at that case, at this case in particular. Our staff is directed by five board members who are appointed by the governor of the state of Kansas from Kansas congressional districts. It's important to note that those board members are residential customers just like you. They feel the same pressures for any rate increase, and they've directed our staff to be very aggressive with regard to this particular rate case to seek the most reasonable rate increase or decrease that we can see. In order to do that, we will present evidence. Now, why that's important is that the law requires the commission to base its decision on rate cases upon the evidence that's entered in the record, and that includes your testimony tonight. So thank you very much for coming. But in addition to your testimony, there will be a technical hearing, as Mr. Vincent alluded to, in August. At that point, Curb will present evidence from its experts to talk about what rates we believe are fair to residential and small commercial ratepayers. We've hired our experts in this case, and we're presently working to derive what testimony we're planning to file. As we'll file that on July 1st, the hearing will take place in mid-August. And that case is highly technical, so the experts are going to talk about areas that are specialized, such as economics, accounting, and other disciplines. It's also important to note that Curb's testimony must comply with Kansas legal precedent. And the reason for that is that the law requires the commission to determine rates upon applicable principles of law. And there are a couple, there are a number of different principles of law that apply to utility rates, but I want to highlight just two that are somewhat pertinent to this case. The first is that utilities are required by law to provide adequate and sufficient service. Think about that for a moment. You wouldn't want to go into your house in the dead of winter and try to trigger your heat, and nothing comes out. You don't want to have your house be unsafe in terms of your utility service. So that's an important aspect of utility service that's guaranteed by commission staff, by our applicable statutes, and I believe that utilities were carded on that element, too. The reality is, though, that in order to maintain adequate and sufficient service, in order to have reliable and safe service, sometimes money has to be spent. So that brings about the second principle that's applicable here. And that is, if the utility spends money to make their system function adequately and sufficiently, safely and reliably, the Kansas, the United States Constitution, for that matter, requires that they are entitled to an opportunity for a fair profit. Now, that's not a guarantee by any means, and circumstances occur very often that a utility never realizes the amount of the opportunity for a fair return that they're entitled to. So I don't want to indicate that somehow or the other this is a guaranteed return for the investors. It's not. But nonetheless, it's important to note that, overall, these two principles work for the benefit of residential and small commercial ratepayers. What they guarantee is safe and reliable service at fair rates. What that means is a practical matter is it simulates competition. And competition, as we all know, is what we hang on to make sure that we have reasonable rates. So Curb's experts are still reviewing this case, and we're still preparing our testimony. But let me highlight a few issues that we are concerned about. The first is whether or not all the investment that KGS is making into their system is reasonable and prudent. The law requires that if the investment is not reasonable or prudent, that it not be included in base rates. So that would mean there'd be a reduction in the amount of your rates that KGS is requesting. In addition to that, we also are concerned with that fair opportunity for profit. Not surprising, in every rate case that I've been involved in, and I think before me, that Curb comes in with a lower fair opportunity for profit or ROE than the utility does. If the commission does not grant the full amount that KGS is requesting, you can expect that your rates are not going to be as high as KGS is requesting. Notwithstanding those revenue issues, we're also concerned with regard to the customer charge. Curb traditionally stands up for a smaller, lower customer charge because we believe that allows customers to control their gas bills a little bit more than a big customer charge. Plus, big customer charges versus little customer charges are less conducive towards conservation. Conservation is good for our environment and also is good in terms of trying to lower demand for gas supplies, which in turn may reduce customer bills. At last, we are concerned about the A/B rate design. We are excited about the fact that customers may have some choice with regard to their... with regard to how their bills are going to be functioned. We understand the theory that Mr. Vincent just talked about. What we want to ensure is that these A/B rates actually work for the customers that are in the public interest. So that's something else we'll look at. We are also interested in evaluating the PBR, the performance-based rates that Mr. Vincent talked about. But we're still studying all of these issues. So I'm not going to go through every issue that Curb is looking at. I don't think that really helps the matter, but I really think what's really important is to get to the matter that we're here for, and that is the overall increase of rates. Curb is very well aware that if this full rate increase comes about, the average residential ratepayer will see an increase in their bills of $6 or so a month. But that's in addition to the amount that we're already paying for the amount that KGS is spending to maintain their pipelines at the present time. And, as you all know, it's in addition to the costs that you're paying for Winter Storm Uri. So when you add all these up together, it's a fairly significant increase for residential customers. And we know that some customers merely just simply cannot afford that kind of a rate increase. We're aware that Kansas has a large portion of its customers that are energy burdened, highly energy burdened, which means that they struggle to pay their utility bills, pay their health care, pay their medicine, if they have medicine, pay for their housing, pay for their food. That's not really one of them. It's important that we address the energy burden and address it properly. It will not be solved with whatever we do in this rate case. It won't be solved. Perhaps lowering rates is a step in the right direction, but it does not make energy affordable. So tonight, I am asking for KGS to pledge to continue to work with Curb and the KCC staff to study the energy burden in Kansas, to come up with solutions that make sense, that reduce the energy burden on our Kansas residential customers, and make energy affordable for all Kansans. I'm waiting for their reply. I think, I'm sure I will be getting a good reply from them. So with that, thank you very much for your attention. And I do want to close with just giving your contact information and to remind you that we are advocates for you, and we'll seek the lowest reasonable rates possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichol. Our third and final presenter for the evening is Carly Massantine of the Commission Staff.
Good evening. As Brian indicated, my name is Carly Massantine, and I'm an attorney who works for the Kansas Corporation Commission. I'm here tonight to give a high-level overview of the commission and how it operates, as well as explain how my clients, the technical staff of the commission, analyze Kansas Gas Service's rate increase application. For clarity's sake, I do not represent the commissioners, nor do I represent the agency as a whole, but rather, I represent the group of employees who make up the KCC staff in the Utilities Division. And from here on out, when I'm talking about my clients, I'm going to be just referring to them as staff. So the commission is a state agency headed by three commissioners. The commissioners collectively act as a body in determining matters that come before them. The current commissioners are Chair Andrew French... The current commissioners are Chair Andrew French, Commissioner Dwight Keen and Commissioner Annie Keather. The commissioners are appointed by the governor and serve staggered four-year terms. The commission has jurisdiction to oversee a number of industries that operate in Kansas, from electric and natural gas to telecommunications to oil and motor carriers. The agency employs a staff of professionals who are available to provide guidance and input on the various technical issues that are involved in the regulation of these industries. Let's see here. Next slide, please. Administrative hearings at the commission look very similar to a trial that you would see in a district court. The commissioners act as judges. They hear and weigh the evidence, witnesses testify in front of them, and they issue orders that ultimately can be appealed to higher courts. The applicant, here Kansas Gas Service or KGS, acts as a party to that case. And staff acts as a party to that case. Staff develops and defends its own independent position. Staff's duty is owed to the state of Kansas and to the general public. So on the screen is a visualization of how all of this is set up. In addition to the utility and the commission's technical staff, there are often other interveners representing outside interests. As you can see, all of these groups are separate parties to the case. And just like a court, it's the attorney's job to present their client's case to the commissioners. Next slide, please. The commission staff are dedicated state of Kansas employees that have a tremendous amount of education and training in technical fields such as accounting, economics, engineering and complex financial analysis. During proceedings before the commission, staff has the ever-challenging job of objectively evaluating all of the opinions in the case and providing an independent, neutral and balanced recommendation that furthers the public interest of the state as a whole. Currently, commission staff are conducting that independent review of KGS's proposal. This review includes an in-depth, in-depth examination of KGS's finances, which allows staff to evaluate the application for accuracy and for compliance with Kansas law and regulations. The investigation also includes identification of any positive or negative impacts on customers and on the utility and on the public generally. During this investigation, staff determines which costs the utility is rightfully entitled to recover in rates. That is which costs are necessary to provide natural gas service to KGS's customers. Staff also evaluates which costs may not be appropriate to recover from customers. Finally, staff evaluates the structure of the utility's rates to ensure that they are fair and that they are based on those underlying costs to serve the customers. After its investigation is complete, staff submits written testimony that indicates its position on the application. And staff will actively participate in the rate case process by advocating for that position throughout. Staff's role is not to help one party over the other, again, but rather to provide that independent assistance to the commissioners in balancing the competing interests and evaluating the total impact of their request on the public interest. Up on the slide here is some further information about staff's upcoming testimony filing. Staff is filing its position on July first. You can access staff's testimony by going to the commission's website, as I believe some of our earlier presenters indicated. On the commission's website, it's visible if you pull up that front page, up on the top of it, there is a tab that says docket filings. And if you go there, you can enter in the docket number, which here is twenty-four dash, dash KGSG dash six-one-zero dash RTS. And you can find all of the documents that have been filed thus far. If you would like to make a comment on the docket, you can also do that by going to the commission's website. And I know there's a lot of information on this slide. I'm actually going to move on from this slide for now, but don't worry, I'm going to have one later that you'll be able to take notes on. So the remaining deadlines are shown on the screen right now. And I'd like to draw your attention to that one that is yellow towards the bottom. That is the important deadline for the public here tonight. Under the current schedule, the public comment period will end at 5:00 PM on August 5th. So if you intend to submit comments in this docket, you must submit your comments by 5:00 PM on August 5th. So this is the slide that I will, will leave up for a little bit here. Um, we want to leave you with information on how you can submit the public comment. So feel free to take a screenshot or write it down. The first way that you can make a comment is here tonight in person following these presentations. You can also send your comments to our public affairs office, online, by mail, or you can call in by phone. And the information for each of those options is on the screen behind me. And again, we welcome you to follow these proceedings on our website. If you go to the KCC's website, again, on the top of that page is a tab called docket filings. If you enter in the docket number, you will be able to see everything that's been filed thus far and you can follow along. So lastly, I just wanted to say thank you all for coming out. Uh, the commission really does value the public's input. These comments get made as a part and put in the record in this docket. The commissioners do review them and they value the public's concerns regarding these proceedings. So thank you.
Thank you, Carly. We'll now take questions for Kansas Gas, Curb and commission staff. And please understand, we'll be trying to keep this segment brief, um, due to the number of people that want to make comments once the commissioners are here for part two. So we would ask that speakers limit themselves to one question, uh, till everybody else gets to talk and to refrain from any appropriate language. For those of you present in the room, we have the microphone in the center aisle, uh, so please step up to the mic. And that way, everybody online can hear your questions and state your name and, and your town. For those of you participating by Zoom, if you have a question, use the raise hand feature and we will alternate between live and Zoom questions as needed. Again, thank you, um, for, for your patience and we're ready for questions. And also if you could direct your questions to, if it's question for Kansas Gas, uh, please say it's for Kansas Gas. So thank you, sir.
Hello, Dent Murray, to be of Kansas. I didn't see anything why an increase was needed. I saw a scheme to increase from two to seven percent. Nothing about that you were short of money, nothing about your revenue that you took in, your expenses. It, uh, you didn't make a very good case, Mr. Vincent. And I don't understand why the, uh, I, I would just think on the KCC, if you'd included that information on your little pamphlet, that information page you put up, that'd be helpful to have it on this. But this is, this looks like a scheme to get more money for, uh, you know, there should be something about what the CEO makes, what the board of directors make, what their increases were. You know, their taxes are going up, property taxes are outrageous. And the, you know, inflation for food, anything you buy, gas, look how much everything's gone up, but you want more money. Yeah, but do you need it? Doesn't look like it's, you didn't make a very good case for anything for an increase. And it's probably a decrease why you didn't dive into those details.
I think, I think that's a, I think that's a fair comment to make. I think it's a fair question to, to present to us. And more than happy to take just a second and expl- expand on that a little bit further and point you to where in our case you can see that. So when we take a look at all of the investments that we have made in the utility infrastructure in Kansas, and it's, it's over a billion dollars in the expenses that we're incurring and we, we contrast that with the revenues that we're currently receiving, we're able to calculate our operating income. And on our application, uh, it's, it's schedule three to our application, the very first page of it. It will, it shows that our operating income on that investment, it's generating a return of about two point, I think, six-one percent. And so that, that is the case. And that is the, one of the main driving points we wanted to articulate this evening is that if you're looking for our operating in, in income in the state of Kansas, we think it's two point six-one percent. And we think a fair return is closer to that seven point eight-eight. And so the, the net base rate increase we have to achieve to get to that, what we find to be a reasonable return is the fifty-eight point one million dollars. And we've got, you know, hundreds of pages of schedules and exhibits with the financials that, that backstop all of that included in our application. So happy to, happy to expand on that further if you'd like and, um, I appreciate, appreciate the comment.
And I'd like to expand further.
Or before you do, can we just be sure, I, I want to give everybody an opportunity to speak and you've had a question.
He, he had an opportunity to speak earlier and he responded to me. I'd like to respond to it.
But this is a question and answer. I, there, there may be nobody else in the room that wants to speak and, and you can have a continuing dialogue. I just want to spread the wealth a little bit. So is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak? Sir, I am going to let him speak. I am trying to let.
All right. In the meanwhile, no one's up. So I'll speak.
I, I, I know. I'm just trying to.
All right. Well, you're wasting the time if somebody does want to speak. All right. Uh, you want a, a seven percent profit. You want to go from two to seven. Have you examined everybody else's here pocketbook, what, what theirs is? Do you think they, they've got increases in this economy? They didn't. I know that. These people don't have an increase and we're not concerned about you going from two to seven percent in this economy. You, you know, it's, it's unreasonable. Oh, you want to make more money. We all do. But you know, as we're not going to with you getting an increase.
Okay, we've got, uh, let me take in, in internet or a Zoom caller. Mr., Mr. Shirkey, I hope I'm pronouncing the names correctly, but Mr. Shirkey, are you there?
Hello, uh, my name is Philip Shirkey from Concordia, Kansas. Can you hear me? Are you able to take my question?
Yes, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Thank you. So while many members of the audience may be, um, you know, flatly approving of this rate increase and many may be flatly disapproving of this rate increase. I do think it's reasonable to increase rates of return if that can be turned into a benefit for the people of Kansas. If this rate increase goes through, your, your rate of return will increase by almost a factor of three. That means you'll be, you know, making profit about three times faster. And my question is, how is that profit going to benefit your consumers? Do you have any planned investments, additional natural gas lines or additional infrastructure that you're going to use to increase the services that you can provide? Where would the money go if this rate increase was passed through?
Sure. No, again, but again, I think that's a great question. I think one way I'd approach it is through two, two different directions. The argument we're presenting in this case is that, that increase we're referring to is necessary to reach a fair and reasonable return on the investments that have already been made. But I do think that having, uh, having that flexibility allows us to pursue additional, you know, potential growth opportunities. I don't have a, a list in front of me, uh, right this, right this moment to walk through items we might be interested in exploring. But no, I think that, that's how, that's how we'd, we'd characterize it.
I'm sorry, sir. Perhaps my question was unclear. May I rephrase it?
Oh, 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 sorry, Brian, I'll need to stop you. But of course, for me.
So if I were an invest, I, I would consider this as an investment. The people of Kansas are investing fifty-eight point one million dollars in your organization. And we'd all love to see that, you know, seven point eight-eight percent return that you guys will be getting. But, but my question is, you know, before you invest money, you have to know what the plan is to spend it. And so how will this investment provide a return for the consumers instead of just a return for the company?
Well, Janet, if you want to expand on that a little bit?
I'm sure. The company has plans over the next, well, and through twenty thirty-five, I think we have some invest, uh, infrastructure replacement plans that we've been required to look into by the commission and have scheduled out replacements of service lines, yard lines, mains and transmission mains, all the, the pipe that's in the ground that's necessary to provide service. So that's a big portion of where that money goes. The other portion is for new customer growths. We are always looking to see if there are areas where we can extend service as people are moving into different areas that we serve. And, um, you know, that takes capital to be able to meet that need. And, and part, the other portion of how, um, customers would see benefit is that if the company is able to earn a reasonable return and show our other investors other than our customers, our investors, that, um, we are able to earn a reasonable return. We're able to gain capital at a cheaper rate, um, in the bond market and, and, um, because they can see that the company is able to earn a return on the investments that are made.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll take a live question, please, and then, and then, uh, just to prepare, Mr. Buehler, uh, you're online and you're on deck. Proceed, please.
My question is, where is that five point one million dollars going to? Is it going to all, all people's pockets? To make them richer? Because I'm almost seventy years old in October. I can't go to Goodyear. I retired from Goodyear for thirty-five years. I can't go there and work overtime because I'm on fixed incomes right now. And everything keeps going up. The water bill, the electric bill, the food bill, the gasoline prices. Out, outrageous.
Kansas Gas, I assume that question's directed to, to you on where the fifty-eight million dollars will go?
I think, I think Janet, I think Janet spoke, spoke to quite well. It, it assures the, or it works to show that the company is financially strong and able to grow and not only grow to serve new customers that come onto the system, but maintain the system that we have so we can continue to provide you that safe and reliable reserve.
Well, I feel where it, I think it's a boat owner or nothing. I'm paying almost a hundred dollars a month in the water. My, my electric bills over a hundred dollars, a hundred fifty dollars a month. I'm running on fixed income, you understand? And why these people are? Because they can't, they can't do nothing else to, to, to make a better living. And we're not getting any wages from nobody. Everybody else wants money to, to keep, keep going. But we don't get no goddamn wage.
You know, I, I hear that you, you, you said a phrase that I really want to, I really want to hit on for just a moment because I think it's really important. We, we know a number of our customers are on a, are on a fixed income like yourself. Well, in this case, we're trying to propose choices that could give customers in that situation real benefits. And that's that AB rate plan. If you're on a fixed income and you're using less natural gas than the average customer, you can take advantage of that lower customer charge. And, um, every MCF of gas that you're able to conserve is that much more impactful under that plan. And so we're hopeful that this res, this proposal we've put together helps with that.
We got to talk to your soul person. Like wait, he's worth a hundred thirty-three dollars a month to go to Seoul. And that's going to screw you all out because I'm, I'm sick of this. I'm sick of this plan.
We're, we're going to move on to the next question and you, you'll have an opportunity to make comments when the commissioners are, are here, sir. Mr. Buehler?
Yeah, I'm online. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Okay. So just gauging by the, um, uh, the emotion from a couple of previous questioners, I, I hope everybody gets the impression that, and it is an understanding that it's not just inflation. It's the, it's the sum total of all those things, but not to digress on that. So I'm assuming that, uh, Kansas Gas Service is, and I'll use your words, I'm assuming you're financially strong now. And, and you've talked about a fair and reasonable return, but my question would be, why now? Given the economic condition, uh, continued record-high inflation that consumers have to bear. I, I, I think the, the choices program that you've talked about is a little disingenuous. People who are on fixed incomes will be turning their thermostats down and freezing in the wintertime just to get a hold of one of those plans. But be that as made, but the question goes back to why now? What happens if you delay this a year or even two years? Uh, I, I don't dispute the fact that we need infrastructure and investment in our gas service, uh, utility and the pipeline, everything that goes with it. But on top of all of the other economic, economic conditions, why now? Why is this, why is this such an imperative that you are coming, coming before the state and asking for a fifty-eight million dollar increase? Why now? What happens if you, um, delay it a year? And that'd be the extent of my question.
That's, that's a great question. There, I think, two elements to that. Uh, one we spoke of in our presentation was that we've, we've invested six hun- over six hundred million dollars since our last rate case in twenty nineteen. And only a little bit more than half of that is currently being reflected in our rates through the gas system reliability surcharge. And only a little bit more than half of that is currently being reflected in our rates through the gas system reliability surcharge. That surcharge component of it, it's a it's a tool that Kansas Legislature gave us. It's got some conditions attached to it, and so we have to file rate cases if we use that surcharge every five to six years. And we do. We think it's a good mechanism that helps fund safety and modernization programs that we are putting into the ground and putting into service every single day. So to one reason is we it we have to file a rate case every five to six years under that statute. And it's been it's been about five since our last case ended in twenty nineteen. And then the the second reason is we've invested quite heavily in the state of Kansas and and the times right for those investments to be integrated into our base rates.
Okay, but but you could delay. I mean, I I get that, or you could. Fifty eight is not an arbitrary number. I realize that. But it is it is it is a large number. But there's still choices that could be either a delay or something less than fifty eight million, correct?
You know, we think we think the case that we've put together and and everything that is going into reflecting that that total, it's not just investments, there's expenses and other components of that calculation that are weighing heavily on it. So we think we do think that now is the right time to to bring a case before the commission.
And we're our our next question will also be via Zoom from a Mr. Chrysler. I hope I got that right. If if not, my apologies. Ken Chrysler? I did unmute his microphone. I
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
So we can hear you.
So, I mean, you keep this to the gas company. They keep stating their investment and rate of return. I mean, just looking online, I don't know what year you presented your numbers that you had a two two percent, if that was twenty twenty three or twenty twenty two. But in twenty twenty three, just looking online, you guys made two hundred and thirty million dollars or two hundred and thirty one million dollars, which was ten million over what you had estimated. And in December, it looked like you already got an eight million increase. So is your two percent return really based on these new proposed numbers of the eight million increase from December plus the ten million? And are you expecting even on the same rate this year to have a higher than two hundred and thirty one million in income? That's net income. So that's after all your investment expenses and everything, I'm assuming, if that's net income.
So I think I think that two hundred and twenty three million dollar figure you're quoting is probably from One Gas Incorporated's ten K, and that is all of our operating divisions of Kansas and Oklahoma and Texas combined. The figures that we're quoting in our rate case here, that that fifty eight point one million dollar figure that we've spoke of tonight, that is that is just for the Kansas, the the Kansas division of One Gas. It is, I'm trying to think, if it is the you know, based off what we feel is necessary to increase our operating income to achieve a fair return. And the the test period that we use to file our case ended in September of twenty twenty three. So that's that's the relevant timeframe that we use to put it together.
So it doesn't take into account the eight million increase that you've already?
Oh, I'm sorry. It does. Yes, it does. That it that fully reflects, including the 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 costs we currently or the revenues we currently receive through the GSRS in this case. Yes, it does.
Okay. We just like, I mean, you keep saying that in your other statements, you kept saying that I don't realize your company's invested a lot of money into the state infrastructure and everything, but you are getting a two point something percent return on that. It's not like it's not being returned. I understand you want to give you and your investors and shareholders a seven percent return guarantee instead of a two point six percent. Yeah.
Okay, well, remember, we want to save time for for questions because the the more time that we spend on on questions, the the less time we have for commissioner comments. I just want to be sure. Are there any other questions from the room? If not, will we, sir, if you want to step up to the mic and we can do this, and then we can hopefully take a break, bring the commissioners in, and you can make your comments to them.
I'm Steve Hare from Kansas. And as I understand it, this is only for residential and small commercial businesses that this rate increase is being proposed. I don't see anything in here for large gas users. And I don't understand how those two might interact and set this rate of return at seven point eight eight percent for small customers. Explain how that works and how did that all get mixed into the overall determination of rate of return for your entire company? My concern is that we're unduly burdening one segment of your customer base at the expense of another. And, you know, I'm biased, so I think it's my side of it. So I'd like to hear your comments. Thanks.
Great question. Janet?
Sure. The rate case impacts all the customer classes that we serve. So residential, small commercial, large commercial, transportation customers. They all will be factored into how the increase is spread throughout throughout the customer classes. And there are experts that look at the cost of serving each of those different groups, what differences there might be in the pipe that goes to them or the amount of customer interaction that might take place. There's well, Lana back there for staff knows the degree of analysis that goes into trying to divide those costs up. And once those costs are divided up, then there's some judgment used by each of the parties on once you decide where the those costs really align, what's really fair for a residential customer to pay or a commercial customer or those large commercial customers? So.
The charges per MCF might be different for each.
Correct.
Can you repeat the question for those that are on Zoom, just since you don't have a microphone? No, no, I'm not. I just would like, could you summarize his question before you answer, just for the audience?
Correct. I expected the question. So he was asking if there would be different variable charges, the delivery charge or different customer charges for each customer class? And yes, that would be the case.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. And we'll take a question from Joy Barnes via Zoom, and then we will break and bring the commissioners in for comments. Ms. Barnes?
Yes, I was wondering, I saw a piece in the paper today, I believe it was, about a rate increase going into effect next year that's already been added. I mean, it's already been approved and everything. How does that play into all of this?
We don't have a we don't have a pending request to implement a rate next year. With the commission's order being scheduled to be issued on October twenty fifth, we would implement rates from this case November first. But we don't have any pending cases for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we'll we'll take a short break, have the commissioners join us, and then you'll have an opportunity to make comments to the the commissioners. I I want to thank everybody that participated in the Q and A session, and we'll we'll resume in just a few minutes. Thank you. All right, if folks can find their seats, we will get ready to convene the the public hearing and hear your comments. I T, are we streaming? All right, very good. All right. Well, good evening. My name is Andrew French. I'm the Chair of the Kansas Corporation Commission, joined by my colleagues, Commissioners Dwight Keen and Annie Keithur. And we all join in thanking you for attending this public hearing tonight. I am calling to order the K C C's public hearing and docket number twenty four K G S G six ten R T S. K G S initiated this docket to request a net increase in base rates of fifty eight point one million dollars. This session is on the record and the transcript will become an important part of the official docket file. May I please begin by getting the appearances of counsel for the parties?
Good evening, Robert Vincent, Overland Park, Kansas, for Kansas Gas Service.
All right, and curb?
David Nichol on behalf of curb.
And Commission staff?
Carly Massantine on behalf of staff.
And does staff have a recommendation regarding whether notice was proper for this proceeding tonight?
Yes, staff has examined notice and recommends a finding that notice was proper. The Commission first issued its order setting the procedural schedule, which listed this date and time as that for the public hearing on April fourth, twenty twenty four. Kansas Gas Service filed an affidavit of public notice in the current docket on June seventh, twenty twenty four. As reflected in that filing, K G S sent out notice of this public hearing and the comment period in a bill insert and by email, starting with the May first, twenty twenty four billing cycle. K G S also sent out by mail and email a postcard with the information concerning this hearing and the comment period on June sixth, sixth, twenty twenty four. On June third, twenty twenty four, K G S provided information concerning this hearing and public comment period on social media outlets. Given that, staff recommends a finding that notice was properly given.
Thank you, Ms. Massantine. With that recitation, I will find that notice was proper. And the Commission has jurisdiction to hear this at this time and place. As I said before, this hearing is an important step in our process, and we look forward to hearing everyone's comments. The Commissioners ourselves cannot engage in dialogue with you during this proceeding. However, we may ask questions for clarification of your comments. I have a list of people who have indicated they would like to offer comments. I will call your name in the order that you appear on my list. And I'll announce the person speaking afterwards, so that person will be prepared to step up next. If you're participating via Zoom, please just use the raise hand feature. We'll probably plan to just alternate between folks in the room and folks online, as long as there are people online seeking to make comments. To make sure anyone who wishes to speak has the opportunity to speak, I am going to ask that you limit your comments to roughly three minutes. So with that, we will start with the first name on my list, and that's Mike Brosh. And just so we're all ready, Steve Hare will will be up after that. So, Mr. Brosh?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair French, Commissioners, Staff, Curb, K G S, Members of the Public. I'm Mike Brosh. I'm pleased to be here and present some insights into the pending K G S rate case on behalf of A A R P. I will not repeat Mr. Nichols' comments regarding energy burden, but I fully understand and A A R P understands the importance of public utility rates to A A R P members and seniors in general, particularly those attempting to get along on fixed incomes. By way of background, I retired in nineteen, or excuse me, twenty twenty two, after dedicating my entire professional career to utility regulation as an expert witness. I was the president of Utilitec, a small consulting firm in the Kansas City area. Since the mid nineteen eighties, Utilitec represented state commissions and consumer advocates and customer groups in literally hundreds of rate cases. I have an accounting and finance background and have testified in more than one hundred and eighty formal proceedings and numerous other investigations and informal regulatory matters, including the most recent K G S rate case here in Kansas on behalf of the Kansas Farm Bureau Bureau and Kansas Corn Growers. I have preliminarily reviewed the K G S rate filing and testimony of policy and revenue requirement witnesses and have identified several important issues that merit close scrutiny by staff, curb, and the Commission. These issues are outlined in A A R P's letter, and I won't burden the record tonight with more of these details, but I'd like to highlight some key concerns at this time. First, the company's requested increase in return on equity to ten point two five percent is excessive and should be greatly reduced, given the very supportive regulatory environment that exists here in Kansas. K G S rate payers have already insulated the company's shareholders from the largest risks facing the business. These include the risks from unusual weather impacting gas sales. There's a weather normalization adjustment. Includes the risk of all variations in the company's cost of purchased gas and all increases in property tax. In addition, the Commission provides expedited annual recovery of gas plant investments made to improve safety and shifts these risks of cost recovery to rate payers. Other trackers exist for changes in costs for cybersecurity pensions, post-employment benefits for employees. The Commission has also shifted the extraordinary costs of Winter Storm Yuri to gas customers, insulating the company from large losses. With all of the reduced operating risks enjoyed by K G S under this regulatory framework, a lower rather than higher return for shareholders is appropriate. The company also seeks to further improve the Kansas regulatory regime for the benefit of shareholders through its proposed new annual performance rate adjustment, or A P R A tariff. From my experience, it's obvious that this proposal would install five annual future rate cases with little regulatory scrutiny or time for your review. The A P R A represents the opposite of performance-based rate making, or P B R. I worked for most of two years with the Hawaii P U C and other parties in the design of a true P B R plan for the investor-owned utilities in the state of Hawaii, culminating in a plan that was approved by that Commission. Each year, Hawaiian Electric's base rates are adjusted based upon an external national price index rather than the utility's actual incurred costs. The inflation index used in Hawaii is the change in gross national product price in index, or G D P P I. And this percentage is further reduced to target a productivity offset, forcing the utility to manage its costs aggressively and beat inflation or face earnings declines if they fail to do so. Other metrics are tracked in Hawaii to provide penalties and incentives for quality of service to ensure that induced cost reductions don't cause service declines. In contrast, the proposed K G F, the K G S tariff, A P R A does none of these things, instead promising five future annual rate increases to track utility cost changes. The proposed return on equity deadband of only one hundred basis points with seventy five percent customer sharing does not achieve the fundamental purpose of well-designed P B R regulation, which is to remove the linkage between utility costs and utility rates. I recommend the Commission reject A P R A and explore more comprehensive P B R approaches that would strongly encourage cost control and productivity improvements within Kansas utilities. This should occur in a broadened investigation that considers methods employed in other states that have adopted true P B R regulation. Next, discretionary expenses incurred for management incentive compensation tied to earnings should be disallowed in rate cases, consistent with this Commission's established policies. K G S wants to include these bonuses in its revenue requirement. In Kansas and other states, regulators routinely exclude earnings-based incentive compensation because utility earnings are largely driven by legislative and regulatory initiatives rather than ambitious cost management and productivity growth. Some have said the big money in the utility business is earned by carefully managing the regulatory and legislative process and rather than just keeping the lights on and the gas flowing a reasonable cost. Most would agree that if shareholders are doing well, they can clearly afford to pay for management incentive compensation rather than simply baking this additional cost into utility rates. Please consider these comments and the additional details contained in A A R P's filed comments in planning work on the right case. I would be pleased to consult with staff or curb in their efforts to process the case. Excuse me? And explore any of these issues I've addressed in my, in the letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brosh. Do we have any comments online?
Sorry, we have a couple commenters signed up online so far.
Why don't you go ahead and give me one online next?
Beverly Jensen, Labonte, and.
And then we will have, after, after she is finished, we'll have Steve Hare here in the room.
She, she should be unmuted. Ms. Labonte?
I'm unmuted.
Okay, please proceed.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Okay, I want to show you something. You see this truck behind me? My husband is a Kansas gas worker. Different last name. Um, they do not, I was told straight out, and he stands for me. I stand for veterans. I'm an advocate in the elderly in the community. And they've been getting a lot of raises. And like he said, this is going to go down no matter what, and they'll get a nice raise. But my husband is a caring man. And he agrees. It's getting outrageous. I can't give out his last name. It's different because it might cost him his job. He's been with the guys twenty-something years, but let's be honest, there's too much profit in Kansas gas and greed. People can't afford this. I'm done speaking.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Now in the room, Steve Hare.
Steve Hare defers to the first two people who commented quite well.
Very good. Appreciate that. Well, let's go to another in the room. Is it Denton Murray? Is that correct?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I live here in Topeka, and Mr. Vincent's presentation was only that they need, they want to bump their two percent to seven percent. And then he said afterwards, he said, it's because they have to file for a rate increase every five to six years. So it's the deadline, and they're doing it. So there's no reason for this increase by his own, his own presentation. It's only because they have to every five or six years. It's that time timeline, apparently by rules or statutes or something. But there's, by his own presentation, there's no excuse for it. It's just greed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Murray. Online, do we have more comments?
Uh, yes, we have a Philip Shirkey. Let me unmute.
And, and whenever Mr. Shirkey is done, the next commenter in the room will be, it looks like Daniel Smalley to me, but. Go ahead, Mr. Shirkey.
He should be unmuted. Mr. Shirkey?
Can all of the Commissioners hear and understand me clearly?
We can. You're coming through loud and clear.
Thank you. The time limit is three minutes, correct?
Yes.
All right. Um, I'd like to start by saying, my name is Philip Shirkey. I'm from Concordia. Um, I'm an engineering student. I've just, over the course of this, I've been looking at publicly available information, and I've run a couple of calculations. These are not, you know, official. I'm not speaking on behalf of anyone unlike that A A R P representative that spoke earlier. Of course, any fault in these is entirely my own. I know that you, as the Commission, have done, you know, a lot of research and calculations that have gone into this. But for anyone in the audience who's maybe a little rusty on their economics, here's what the increase would mean. The increase going from a two point six percent, two point six six percent rate of return to a seven point eight eight percent rate of return. Let's say that you invested a hundred dollars in the Kansas Gas Service, or I guess in the, the full company, One Gas. If you invested a hundred dollars under the current system and you waited ten years, ten years for me, that's an eternity. I'm twenty years old. But for you guys, that, that's probably a reasonable investment time. That ten-year investment of a hundred dollars were turned into a hundred and thirty dollars. After that long, a fairly decent rate. However, if you waited ten years with the new plan, it would be two hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty one cents from that additional investment of a hundred dollars. To be clear, that is not an extra one hundred and thirteen point five one dollars of investment in the community. That is an extra one hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty one cents of profit for the owners of One Gas, and I don't believe that's acceptable. In the, in December of twenty twenty three, a rate increase was put into effect. That was eight million dollars. In addition to the fifty eight point one million that's currently on the table, thirty five million has been approved. That means that not only did they get a three point four six percent increase in income from that December twenty three figure of eight million, but another fifteen point one five percent increase in profit for the company has already been approved. Now they're asking for yet another twenty five point one five percent increase. In total, if all of these rates are approved, there will be an increase in profit for One Gas of forty three point seven percent. They're going to be making another one hundred and one point one million dollars in comparison to their twenty twenty four expected profits of two hundred thirty one million dollars. Now, I don't consider myself a coward, but I'd be pretty nervous if I asked my boss for a fifty, for a forty three point seven percent raise. But that's exactly what these people are doing here. You have a responsibility as Commissioners that represent the people to deny this request. Leave them with only a meager eighteen point six one percent raise for this year. I think that is more than enough for them to not only cover inflation but to cover any needed investments. And let's talk about inflation. Inflation was three point four percent during, I believe it was May of twenty twenty two, and it went down to, I think, three point three percent in May of twenty twenty three, where I took my figure from. Let's say that One Gas needs to increase its margin to account for inflation. If you want to increase, you would need to give them another zero point six four percent in profits, which would be seven point one two three million dollars. Please, if you're going to approve a rate increase, approve no more than seven point one two three million dollars. The amount needed to account for inflation and allow the company to continue providing services. I'm sorry I've run over time a little. Thank you very much, and I look forward to the rest of the comments.
We appreciate it. All right, did I get the name right?
Dan Smalley.
Very good.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, I concur with the gentleman from A A R P and this young man that just spoke very eloquently. I noticed when Janet, I believe, was struggling to answer as to where the money was going to go, the profits. And the gentleman from A A R P described how a lot of this profit is going to go for incentives and bonuses for the upper echelon of gas. Uh, K G S. Not to say that you don't have a lot of work that you've done here to get this to this point, but, and he's right, and he's right. Uh, the total of the ask on this is ninety three million dollars, counting the thirty five million that I, I guess has already been approved, and there's something about seven million's already been laid out towards this. So, I mean, it's in their filing. It's like in the first few pages. It's on your website. They're asking for ninety three point one million dollars. It's not fifty eight point one million dollars. And so you're going to roll this money over into cost of service to pay for this cost of service increase to pay for incentives for management. That's what I don't get. How does that work? Does it? I'm telling you. Oh, oh, and the, the the rate seventy three thousand cubic feet. That's the cutoff point. So how are you going to, I, I tried to find out how much I used last year. Called gas service, couldn't find out. I, fortunately, I keep everything, so I found all my bills and figured it out. I used sixty, sixty five point six uh, thousand cubic feet last year. Just one week of a Arctic storm this winter, and I'll be over the seventy three. And so then I can choose B. So I can maybe, I don't know, I'd have to look to see how much I would use and, and whether B would save me any more money. But I can only do this once a year. And, and what I'm looking at is what the increase is for the the, the small residential as opposed to the, to the, somebody that goes over to the seventy three, the, the B schedule, the B class. Uh, they're going to be paying roughly two hundred dollars more a year in increase in their base rate, which is about, what was it, ninety? What was it, ninety four percent increase over the eighteen fifty? Oh, and don't forget, we're still paying for the the money that Winter Storm Uri uh, ramped up usage on, and K C C granted three hundred and sixty six million to K G S to recoup that, which we're paying five to seven dollars a month for. which we're paying five to seven dollars a month for, and it equates to five-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars and eighty-one cents per customer. Uh, that, that comes out to about a hundred-and-thirteen, eight, a hundred-and-thirteen months for, at five dollars and eighty months for seven dollars. So that's nine and a half years at five dollars and six-point-six-six years at seven dollars. And we're just, what, two years into this because it was passed in twenty-twenty-two? So we got a long way to go on that, too. So, and it's not like, uh, KGS doesn't get increases every year. They say they didn't get a raise in five years, but they get a raise every year when they row, roll the, this, the liability service over. And, and now they want to put that into the base rate. And then knock that back to zero and start over again, and then we'll work up, I think it's at three-fifty-seven now on the, uh, surcharge, uh, rider that you guys granted to them. I think that was, or the cost of service rider was granted back in twenty-sixteen. I can't remember the exact date, but anyway, uh, these guys really said it all. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, Mr. Smalling. Nobody else on the, okay, then we will go to Mr. Jonathan Smith here in the room. Do we have a Jonathan Smith? I think it may be this gentleman walking up now.
Rolling the dice on this one. All right, three minutes. I'll have to speak pretty quick. Uh, good evening, guys.
A little leeway, I think we've.
Hey, appreciate it. Uh, thank you for this presentation. Uh, that annual utility rate realignment and consumer revenue sharing program is interesting. Uh, I guess we will see whether we ever see any of that excess revenue. Uh, didn't realize that term existed in business. Uh, thanks for the presentation from Curb. Uh, your comments stating that the executives of Kansas Gas Service share in the same pressure we do when it comes to utility rate increases is cute at best, if not insulting at worst. Uh, let's look at the salaries of some of the One Gas executives, parent company to Kansas Gas Service. The COO, the CFO, the general counsel, general counsel, and of course, the CEO all make well above a million dollars annually. The CEO making four-point-five million dollars. These people do not feel what we feel when the gas rates go up. These people have no idea what it feels like to live on social security, on fixed retirement, on disability, to be a single mother trying to raise kids and balance employment. I understand that Curb is one of the few organizations advocating on behalf of residential consumers, but let's be real, the median salary at One Gas is eighty-six thousand dollars, which is good, good for their employees, but let's not pretend that the people making the decision to raise these rates know what it feels like to have a utility bill go up and just be left to figure it out. Let's get into some of the research that I did into Kansas Gas Service. I was looking over the twenty-twenty-three Kansas Gas Service full year financial results, and I was comparing them to the twenty-twenty-two financial results. Let's see what I can read from those tea leaves. I see that you guys lost two-hundred-and-six million in total revenues. That's unfortunate. But hold on, it also appears as though the cost of natural gas went down three-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars in that time period. So that doesn't appear to be your issue. Uh, congrats on the hundred-and-twenty million dollars in savings there. I see that your operating costs increased forty million between twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, as well as an increase in depreciation and amortization rates of about fifty million. Um, amortization for all of us normal folks is basically debt service or paying down loans on your assets. What I'm seeing is a bit of a need to tighten your own belt, Kansas Gas Service. Someone has gotten a little loose with their administrative costs and debt financing, and I didn't realize that that was a me problem. Sounds an awful lot like a you problem. All right, let's skip forward to the meat of the report. Um, using the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics as a metric of inflation, Kansas Gas Service had a net income of two-hundred-and-twenty-one million dollars in December twenty-twenty-two dollars, with no increase or decrease in profits that would equal out to about two-hundred-and-twenty-nine million in December of twenty-twenty-three dollars. Kansas Gas Service's actual net income in December twenty-twenty-three was two-hundred-and-thirty-two million, a nine-point-five percent increase, beating inflation by two million dollars. Just eke that one out, but well done. If only we could all be so lucky. I'm pretty sure between twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, my personal net income dropped five thousand dollars, a drop of nine-point-four percent in net income. Felt that. Oops, forgot to include inflation. That's another nine-point-six percent. So my buying power dropped nineteen percent or fourteen thousand dollars in a single year. Ouchie. Well, at least Evergy didn't decide to increase their electricity rates last year. Oh, wait, it says here that they did increase their electricity rates last year by an average of three-point-five percent a month. Snuck it in right before Christmas, actually. At least we didn't receive the requested ten percent increase, I suppose. Merry Christmas, y'all. Well, at least our water rates didn't go up last year. Now, hold on a minute. I'm reading here in April, the city of Topeka raised water rates seven percent, and then again, six-point-nine percent this year, and then they will raise it another six-point-nine percent in twenty-five, and again in twenty-six. Huh. Well, I'll take a moment to lessen some of the heat on Topeka Utilities. They are mandated by ordinance to only pay for their services through their rate increases. They have no other way of paying for water services, but Kansas Gas Service isn't. I suppose my question that I'm going to propose to the Kansas Corporation Commission is this. When do the corporations that monopolize our utility markets start taking their ten percent hit to their profits last year and this year and next year? How is it that they fooled you into thinking it's okay for us to be utility rated out of our homes to protect their profits, to protect their investors, to protect their dividends? When do we get protected? Do you think I would choose to pay more for natural gas if I could afford to switch to electric utilities? Do you think I would choose to pay Evergy more if I could afford technology that can pull electric power from the sun and the wind for pennies in upkeep? We can barely afford groceries. My daily lunch is a peanut butter and jelly sandwich and water. I have cut alcohol. I have cut soda. I have cut ham and cheese. I've got name-brand peanut butter. I have cut name-brand jelly. I'm running out of things that I can cut here, and you want me to pay more for a service that I cannot afford to get rid of? I am making the median salary in Kansas. I don't know what the rest of you are doing to survive because I'm doing okay. Uh, when are enough profits, enough profits, when you are forcing people onto the street? Forcing people to choose between healthy fruits and vegetables and cheaper vegetables like potatoes and corn for your kids? When will we stop putting executives over consumers? How about instead of asking us to pay for the deferred maintenance that you put off for your infrastructure, why don't you restructure your organization or investment portfolio to find those expenses? We, as citizens, don't have the ability to just find extra money in the same way that you can. You are tapping a dry well reaching into our pockets. I'm sorry that you are the last utility in town to raise your wa, rates, but we're broke. Find your money somewhere else.
Mr. Fedotin, still nobody online. All right, uh, we have come to our last commenter here in the room, Roxanne Webb. Well, we may have already come to our last commenter.
Um, I just want to know how do you stop? I'll ask that question. How do you stop?
Ma'am? The, the, the audience, uh, uh, on, on, uh, the internet can't hear you. So, uh, if you can go to the mic, or I guess I can repeat the question you're, the.
Well, just a reminder, this is, this is the comment section. This is for you to give a comment to us. I think we've already passed the Q and A session.
Right, so, I, I mean, if you want to comment, you would like to stop the increase or something, I mean, you certainly could, can.
I have prepared some remarks, and I don't see how I can participate. So can you hear me now?
Yes, we, are you on Zoom?
I'm on Zoom.
If you would please just state your name and then go ahead and make your remarks.
Okay, this is Angela Shiffrick from Prairie Village. And these are my remarks. Many of us depend on natural gas for our very survival. We depend on you commissioners to protect the public best interest while we customers have no choice but to deal with a monopoly gas service. A series of mergers happened in nineteen ninety-two, two thousand and eight, and twenty-eighteen, resulting in an ever bigger gas company. Until now, Kansas Gas Service has become a subsidiary of One Gas headquartered in Tulsa, Oklahoma, with two-point-three million customers. The president and CEO, Robert McAnally, receives four-point-five million in yearly compensation. He is surrounded by many vice presidents, each receiving more than a million dollars every year, and also many board members each receiving more than a quarter of a million dollars annually. These lavish salaries are supported by ratepayers who may be elderly, on a fixed income, working low-wage jobs, single parents providing for families, and all of us. I suggest these generous compensation packages take a twenty percent pay cut immediately. In twenty-nineteen, Kansas Gas Service asked for a forty-five-point-six million dollar rate increase and received less than half, twenty-one-point-five million. When the federal corporate tax rate dropped from thirty-five percent to twenty-one percent, the executives wanted to keep these tax savings of seventeen-point-nine million for themselves instead of passing these savings on to customers. Thankfully, you commissioners did not approve of this plan, and customers received a one-time bill credit of twenty-one dollars and six cents. My monthly bill now includes a gas system reliability charge and a winter event securitized cost. Now, corporate is asking for a rate increase of fifty-eight-point-one million, a higher return on equity for their shareholders, a two-rate option, a streamlined process for annual rate increases and customers to pay for financially-based incentives for executive compensation. Please do not grant any of these requests. They are not in the best interest of, uh, ratepayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just ask, um, we've, we've still got some time. Is there anybody else in the room or anybody, um, on Zoom, perhaps like the last participant that couldn't find the handraise feature but would like to, to speak? Oh, go ahead. If you would, we've got someone in the room. If you would say your, say your name.
James Kenyon.
Sorry, say it again.
James Kenyon.
Okay.
I'm a Navy veteran. I'm on fixed, two, fixed incomes. I can't afford more and more and more. Because there's a lot of water bill and a lot, every, every day, the food bills and gas bills, everything keeps going up. You, you, do you know how your, your house payment went up? They took pictures and then they come to the door and talk to us. That's how they got their more taxes for, for the, uh, houses. And, and, and put the valuation up more. That's, that's BS.
Thank you. Any additional comments in the room or on Zoom? I don't think your mic is on.
Oh, yeah, we have Mr. Shirkey again for a, a follow-up.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Shirkey, go ahead.
Wait, one, uh.
Am I allowed a follow-up comment? I did already speak on this matter.
Sure, we have a little time, so why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Um, sorry, one moment. I need to collect my thoughts. Um, as the, you know, relevant government, um, agency on this matter, I, I want to remind you guys that you do have the, the final say here. You know, I, of course, am not privy to whatever political, operational, economic concerns you guys have. And I know you have a lot of competing narratives that have to be aligned in a way that's going to, you know, allow the state of Kansas to move forward. And I want to be clear that, you know, there, there, there is a line that can be drawn that is both protective of the interests of the people and also in the service of the company that we do rely upon for our utilities. It's not in anyone's interest for One Gas or the Kansas Gas Service to fail economically. And if a rate increase is justified to promote the continued existence of our utilities, that is, of course, fair and would help the people of Kansas. But I, for one, with publicly available information, don't see the evidence that this rate increase is justified. From the year twenty-twenty-two to the year twenty-twenty-three, the profits of One Gas, so, you know, not just the Kansas profits, but the, the whole group increased by nine-point-five million dollars. Let's, you know, very roughly say it's about the same for each state that, that they're a member of. So we'll say, you know, maybe three or four million dollars in profit increase over Kansas. Good for them. Maybe they needed it to combat inflation. Going from twenty-three to twenty-four, if you approve this increase, it's going to be a total effect that is six-point-one times more profit than they would get with the normal rate increases of, say, eight million. There is a line that you can draw that will allow the company to make a higher profit and allow the people to continue to survive. That line is not fifty-eight-point-one million dollars. Please deny this request. And if the company has a very compelling reason to provide some rate increase, you as the regulators have the power to maybe, you know, give them some more time if they need to file before the five-year deadline. You have the power at the end of the day, and I urge you to use it well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments in the room or online? No hands online? No. I, I was trigger happy. Um, all right, I, I think we have reached the end of all our comments. Let me see where I'm at on my notes here. If we don't have any more comments, I do need to remind everyone that public comment period will be open until, uh, close of business, five P M. on August fifth. So even if you didn't get up and make a comment tonight, you can still make a written comment. I know the gentleman from AARP said he has one ready to file with us. Um, so everybody is able to do that, and you can find the instructions on our website, and I think there's a handout as well, um, that give you all the ways to make comments. So you can do written comments. Uh, you can also call our public affairs office and, and give verbal comments. The commission will hold an evidentiary hearing in this matter beginning on August twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, and that will begin at nine A M. in our offices here in Topeka, just right across the street, actually. Uh, the hearing will also be broadcast on the KCC's YouTube channel, and the commission will issue a decision in this matter on or before October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four. This does conclude the public hearing. Thank you for your comments and your attendance tonight. We are adjourned. Thank you.